I am Henry. I will affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Carver, of the county of Carver, to which I have been elected, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Now, what do we have?
This is Landa.
Landa.
I call this meeting order.
Don't laugh. Please stand for the pledge.
Please stand for the pledge.
Okay, go. We'll say the pledge and then you can go down. Stay here. Go.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any residents' comments and questions for anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Paul and his special guest.
Yes. Paul Modine, township supervisor for your neighbor, Dahlgren Township, and your most loyal neighbor over here, Clifford Modine. We actually, just on behalf of the township board, as well as the residents of Dahlgren, wanted to send a New Year's greeting, as well as congratulations to the newest members of the council, the new mayor, and just let you guys know, we look forward to working with you as we continue to work through our orderly annexation and all the issues that we are blessed to deal with in the coming year in 2019. So, thank you again. Congratulations to all of you, the newbies. Best of luck. And again, we look forward to working with you. So, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, stuff takes somebody seriously when they're holding a stuffed animal in their hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other residents' comments or questions? All right, then presentations and reports. I think we are up. Mr. Merrick?
I'd like to invite Deputy Larry Lassard to introduce our deputies for 2019 from the Carver County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, Larry.
Evening. I'll make this quick as I can. Today I'll be introducing Deputy Sandberg and Deputy Posert. Deputy Sandberg will be your town liaison. Deputy Posert will be your, over your nighttime deputy who you share with Lake Town Township. So I thought I'd bring them, introduce them to the council. Before I do that, I'd like to say thank you to the city and the city staff. I've been here just shy of ten years and I've had a great time, great memories. So I'm going to just patrol general Carver County. So, I'll still be listening on the radio and come down for special events maybe. So, with that, I want to thank everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you for your years of service.
I miss you, Larry. We'll see you around.
Not that much, though.
Hi there. My name's Katie. I've been with Carver County for about a year and a half. I had been with the city of Victoria as patrolling their city, and now I'm here in Carver, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Katie.
Counsel. My name is Charlie Posert. I've been in the sheriff's office since 2015. I split my time between the road and investigations, most recently in the city of Chanhassen. Excited to come down to here. A little quieter and smaller neighborhood. Hopefully, keep it safe and comfortable and, like I said, be able to create some great conversations, relationships with the people here. It's a little tougher in a bigger city, so I'm excited for that. And like Larry said, I split my time between Lake Town Township and Carver. So, I believe it's three and a half hours for Lake Town Township and six and a half hours per shift for in the city of Carver. So, majority of my time will be here in the city of Carver. So, looking forward to an exciting year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
See you, guys.
All right. Up next, WE Cab, Mary Hersberger.
Hello.
Hi, Mary.
First, I want to congratulate all of you for serving on council and for doing the city's business. It's a really, really important job, and you will be the leaders of the city, so thank you so very much. I live in Victoria, and I currently serve as the president of WE Cab. For those of you who might not be as familiar, WE Cab is a supplemental transportation service. We are staffed entirely by volunteers except a part-time executive director that we hired about six months ago. We serve all of Carver County except for the cities and around Norwood Young America. And the reason is, is they have chosen right now not to sign up with us. In order to be part of WE Cab, you have to have some volunteers, some sort of financial commitment, and so forth and so forth. And I'm pleased to say thank you from all of WE Cab because Carver has been a big part of WE Cab since our very beginning. We all, I have left you again with the WE Cab, what I call "fast facts." You can just kind of look down what kind of hours, what kind of transportation, what things we are doing. I do want to tell you a story about a family in Carver. Lives out in your new apartments on Hartwell, out there. And this family moved here and had been part of your community for, I'd say, and I think they told me, a couple of years. And the family had an accident with their car. And they have two small children. And so, the husband works at Amazon, and those shifts start like at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, and they end like at 6:30 at night. So WE Cab provided transportation to these people during the interim period while they worked with Love Inc. to provide a car for them and also so that he could get to and from work. So, we were over here quite a bit early, early in the morning, not much traffic going on, over to Shakopee, and then pick them up later at 6:30 at night. So, that was a pretty, and we're still helping them out, too. One of the things that I said that we do is we are volunteers, and so tonight, rather than have me talk about what it is to be like a volunteer, even though I am, I brought along one of our drivers, Chip Kempenin. And so Chip just going to talk a few minutes about what he does, and then I'll be quiet, and perhaps you have questions.
Again, congratulations to all of you. Happy New Year. My name is Chip Kempenin. I live in Victoria also. And I've been a volunteer driver, one of the volunteer drivers for WE Cab for about two years now. And within this last year, I've also become a volunteer dispatcher to get the rides lined up when the riders call in to get a ride scheduled. And I just want to let you know that there's more than just Mary to this organization, and that I really have enjoyed my time and hope to get even more involved going forward. And we really appreciate your support because we do have some expenses to cover, but mostly it's all volunteer effort, and our riders always give us really positive feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
Thanks, Chip.
So, one of the things that we will be doing this year, and thank you to Councilmember Kristi Mock for letting us know that Southwest Prime, through, I'm not sure how, but any rate, Southwest Prime probably won't be providing a lot of rides over here. And so we hope we can pick up at least some of the slack that might happen. We will be delivering more brochures around here because we know that you guys need some transportation, or I should say, your citizens do. So, we'll be doing that. Last, but not least, we are entirely dependent on donations. And so, thank you so much to Carver for your donation for the last five years, I think, four years. We really, really appreciate it. I did bring a pen for each of you. We don't give these out very often because they cost money, but we figure for a council, we should bring some.
I think we're all using them right now.
Yeah, oh, good, good. Did you sign those official papers with the WE Cab pen then? So, any rate, thank you very, very much. Thank you for letting us come to your meeting, and thank you for serving the city and the surrounding area in your positions. Any questions that I can answer?
Mary, how long has WE Cab been in existence?
WE Cab itself has been in existence in 2011. It started out in West Tonka. In Carver County, we began the service on October 21st, 2014. So, we're starting our fifth year.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And by the way, Carver was a part of initially WE Cab. Watertown, Waconia, and some of the other cities' mayor came on much later than Carver. Carver's been there since day one.
Mary, do you know, I see in the "fast facts" your Carver County numbers, but do you know how many rides you give, breaking it down a little bit more to Carver, City of Carver residents?
We don't know exactly with Carver, but we can probably get some additional information. I will say that the service to Carver is not huge. We don't have a lot of riders here. We do have some of our key volunteers that live here. In fact, we have one of our best dispatchers that lives in Carver.
You want to give him a shout out?
What?
You want to recognize them?
Sure. Cecily, in fact, her son is even a law enforcement officer. I understand he went back to Victoria. But Cecily Christopher is a dispatcher from here, does an excellent job. She's on duty every week. She's always. So, we're very appreciative.
And you guys have the fleet of vehicles, right? Volunteers aren't volunteering with their cars?
Volunteers use their own cars.
Okay.
Yes. And they use their own cars, and they are able to put in for mileage. But the mileage is at the charity rate, which is all of 14 cents a mile. Most of our drivers have decided that they do not want the reimbursement. So that, they donate their hours, they donate their car, they donate also the mileage.
I have a question. Are the majority of the transportation needs for medical appointments to and from work, school? Is there, maybe there's another category missing?
Good question. Our average age is about 70, although we have one client over here who goes back and forth from Chaska regularly, and I think she's about 25 years old, if I can remember correctly. But most of the greatest we do is for medical appointments. We do a lot of food shelves in grocery stores. We do do, because one of the beauties that I think in WE Cab is, we also do social things. So people will say, you know, I need to get over to the birthday party for my friends. And as we all know, those kinds of things, especially as we get older, are exceedingly important. But we take, we're at 212 all the time, and we all know, anybody who works with WE Cab, we know those addresses in Waconia, 560, I think it's 560, what is it, 560? I just put, and then the hospital, of course. And then also because one of the providers has started to do oncology out here, oncology treatment, and that's been really helpful, at least for us. We don't have to take people down to the University of Minnesota, which we do on occasion, take them to the university for oncology appointments.
Do you find that you have enough drivers?
Thank you for asking that question. I should have, I didn't plant it, right? We really need volunteers. We need especially drivers, and as you know, volunteers can volunteer whenever they want. We serve 24/7. If you don't want to drive in the middle of the night, or get up early and take somebody to Amazon, you drive in the afternoon. But we really, really need volunteers for drivers, and we could use some more dispatchers as we grow. The phone calls keep coming in. And so, we work, dispatching is nine in the morning to one in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. So once, and then the computers kick off, literally, you're done. So, and you do all that from your own home, or wherever you are, I should say, because we do have a dispatcher who lives in Arizona. She used to live in Carver County. She loves WE Cab. She moved to Arizona, and she dispatches.
Well, Mary, I want to say one thing to you. You and I have known each other for, well, it's getting to be a longer time now, so. Well, I was in my twenties, and I'm certainly past that.
Wasn't it your first job or something like that? Maybe not, I'm not sure.
Well, it was City of Victoria. It was when I worked for the City of Victoria, and you were the mayor.
Not even that, yeah.
Oh, it was before that even. Anyways, Mary, I just want to say, you have put so much time and effort into this WE Cab, and you are really great at giving everyone else the accolades for all of the hard work. But I think that we definitely need to recognize you for all that you have done to put this together, to help out the residents and citizens in these surrounding communities. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will say, it's truly a labor of love. I think this is a wonderful program, as Chip highlighted. It's just a wonderful program, and the people, they are so thankful and so gracious. They just really, really are wonderful people, wonderful riders that we have, too. And children. You know, they bring their children sometime. They have to have their car seats, but we take children, too. Thank you, Kristi, but most of all, thanks to all of you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mary.
Yep, you're very welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, we have no public hearings this evening under the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Henry and a second from Councilmember Sayer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We don't have any unfinished business for new business. We have our organization resolution. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. The official first item of business for, on any new year for a city council is to do the organization resolution. Tradition holds in the city of Carver that the council adopts this in one motion in the form of a resolution that's in your packet. The positions that you see on the screen are filled typically by kind of an informal majority. The city clerk then fills those in, and then the council adopts those as a part of their resolution. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So in the past, we've just kind of hashed this out for, yeah, whoever is interested, so.
I'll make this maybe easy. I would like to remain on the HPC.
I would like to go last, just being newest. I feel like there's things I could learn from each one of those responsibilities, so maybe just wait and see where there's a need.
Okay. Glenn, do you have any?
How do you want to make recommendations? I mean, just?
I'm fine with if, just kind of, as Kristi did, if anybody's interested in, yeah, throw it up.
Well, I think the Planning Commission is the only commission I have not served. And if there's an open seat, I'd like to take a shot at that.
They're a good group?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Which would leave open the Parks Commission.
Parks?
If there's a need there, certainly. I'd be happy to. Just because I realized, too, we're going to have a lot of things to work on, which would excite me.
Well, and I was talking to Brent, we can leave some of these open and revisit this because we are one person short tonight. So, just kind of as we're going through this, we can also fill them all up tonight, too, if we so decide. I would like to do the Southwest Transit Board.
What about the Transportation Alliance, that also? Are they one of those?
Can you explain a little bit what the differences with them?
Sure. That's primarily cities along the 212 and Highway 5 corridor, but in recent years, it's been primarily focused on the expansion of the 212 corridor to four lanes from Carver to Norwood Young America. So, they'll typically meet, I would say, once a quarter. They've traditionally met at Chaska City Hall on Fridays, 7:30 in the morning.
I would be interested in that one.
Head it Friday, 7:30 in the morning?
Wait, wait, wait. No, I take that back.
It's yours if you'd like it.
And does anybody else have interest in that?
I think you'd be a good fit for it.
I'm going to jump in.
Yeah, go.
There's two spots for the fireboard. I've been on that the last couple of years. I would enjoy to stay on that one. There is another seat open. If there's two people who really feel passionate about that, I mean, I would be able to step away. But if no one has any...
That's a lower commitment one. It meets twice a year. All right, so I see Kristi and...
And we can leave the other one open?
We can go back and fill my name in on the Park and Rec if we think that makes sense. What is the commitment level for the Carver County leaders?
That is quarterly. And it's, I think it would interest you, Laurie, if you are interested in it. It'd be 7:30 in the morning. I can't remember what day of week, but it's only quarterly.
Let's move forward with that. I think I would enjoy that and hope I could contribute, and then come back and give summaries of what's discussed.
Sounds good. Carver Business Council, that meets once a month, generally the third weekend of the month when the occasional shops are open, and that's a really good group. I...
We want to see if the oncoming person wants that, or is that something?
I have no qualms with that.
Sure. If that one is a TBD. Yeah. And then Acting Mayor.
Do you like to do that, anyone? I can certainly do that.
Let's have Kristi. All right. So I think we've got that hashed out. I think we just need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 101-19, Organization.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember Sayer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number 10.2, United Properties Annexation. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Tonight, there is a resolution included in your packet that authorizes application to be made to the state of Minnesota, the Office of Administrative Hearings for Annexation of the United Properties property. So, a little bit of context of where we are. We are just south of Highway 212, just west of Jonathan Carver Parkway, and east of the new Meridian Fields-D.R. Horton development. The elementary school is shown to the south. So, we're right in that southwest corner of Highway 212 and Jonathan Carver Parkway. So, I'm going to break it down a little bit of how annexation works. So, in 2009, we entered into an orderly annexation agreement with Dahlgren Township. So, this agreement sets out the annexation area. So, the area that we anticipate that the city of Carver may eventually get to, that's currently in the township. The annexation agreement also determines the process, so the notice that's required, fees that are required, review time, and who has land use authority over the land. So how does this all start? So, a property owner that currently is in Dahlgren Township but is interested in coming into the city of Carver, it's typically when there's a developer interested in the property. So, the property owner approaches the city and the township with a petition, so a formal application to the city. At that point, the city sends the information to the township, essentially to say, we've received this application. It's your turn to review. So, they go first. They have 30 days to review the information. Make sure it complies with the orderly annexation agreement. After that, that's where the step we're at right now. So, the city council reviews it. There is a resolution in the packet, so we'll be asking you to move on a resolution. At that point, we are able to move forward to the Office of Administrative Hearings, which is at the state level. They again have a 30-day review period. So, they check the orderly annexation agreement. They check the application that's submitted against that agreement. Make sure that they are working together. And then they do a formal review with likely approval for this property. If approved at that point, the property is in the city of Carver. At that point, we have land use authority over the property, and we're able to start making some decisions. So, that triggers when we're able to start making decisions about rezoning, preliminary plat, typical planning processes. Something to note, when a property is annexed into the city of Carver, the default zoning is AG, so agriculture. It doesn't matter what the comprehensive plan says. It doesn't automatically get zoned to that. So, it goes default to AG until we're able to identify a project and a user that will be on the property. So, the next steps, should you move forward with the resolution and the forward to the state, we are going to provide notice to adjacent neighborhoods. So, thinking about where this property is in relation to some pretty mature neighborhoods, we would like to give some notice to those property owners that things might start looking a little bit different on that property. So, we're going to notice Spring Creek, Copper Hills, Carver Crossing, the elementary school, so that general swoop along the property that, we're starting to work on one of these properties that has been for sale for a while, just to give them a little bit more of a heads up. The next step for the applicant is they begin to work on plans. So, the formal plans that you begin to review, preliminary plat, final plat. As part of this annexation and preliminary plat, a traffic study will be required. So, we thought about Monroe Drive pretty intensely when Meridian Fields came in. So, they will additionally need to do a traffic study, thinking about the users on the site and how they might impact Monroe Drive as well as Jonathan Carver Parkway. So, when preliminary plat comes in, there also will be that technical traffic study that we'll review and provide to you for your review as well. After that, we begin the typical planning process. So, you'll see it several times before you. The Planning Commission will additionally review, hold public hearings, move forward with the typical planning process, preliminary plat, rezoning, and final plat. So, some more detail of some of the groundwork that we've laid for this project. So, in the draft design Carver comprehensive plan, the future land use map, this property is guided commercial. So, it was guided previously in the 2008 plan that same way. It carried through to the update of the plan. So, thinking through this, it will likely be a commercial corridor, and that is also what United Properties is providing to us as a concept. So, when it does come in, there will not need to be a comprehensive plan amendment should they move forward with the concept that they are presenting. So, some details about that concept. So, United Properties has indicated that the gas or convenience outlined in the yellow will likely be the first user on the site. So, we'll begin to do some detailed work on that specific user, likely with the rest of the property to be maintained in an outlot until other users are determined. So, that's likely our first project. Again, the concept plan is really subject to change. We know some things about this property, but as we start digging into the detailed engineering plans, they might change a little bit. So, I would ask you to look at this from a pretty high level. Think about the use of the property, not so much exactly what is shown in the bubbles. So, thinking specifically that the yellow user will likely be the first. So, thinking specifically that the yellow user will likely be the first. We do have a member of the United Properties Development Team here today. If you have specific questions for him, otherwise, I'll open it up for discussion.
The only question I have is for council. Does this meet all the requirements for the orderly annexation?
It meets the requirements of the orderly annexation agreement. We will go through the process, we will submit it to the state, and, you know, I, I can't predict what OAH will do, but it is consistent with the same means and method with which the city has annexed properties over the last four years.
Thank you, Larry.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 103-19, approving the annexation of property in accordance with the orderly annexation agreement, 1428.
I'll second. Motion by Councilmember Henry, second by Councilmember Mock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Right, moving on to the final plat for Oak Tree, their third phase. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are reviewing tonight final plat for Phase 3 of Oak Tree. So, you've seen this development a couple of times before you, so, going back quite a ways, the original concept plan was before the Planning Commission on December 15, 2016, City Council, January 3, 2017, so roughly two years we started this project at the concept level. Preliminary plat was reviewed in May of 2017, and then again in September. Rezoning again ran consistent with preliminary plat, and then final plat has been reviewed for Phases 1 and 2 previously. So, this is the third phase, three of four, that Lenar is proposing for the Oak Tree development. So, a visual of the area that we're looking at tonight specifically. Phase 1 is directly along Jonathan Carver Parkway. If you'll remember, that was 63 lots. So, that was a mix of the villa lots, as well as the 60-foot single-family homes. Those are the two that are under construction today. So, if you drive past and see two homes out there, one is included in the villa area, the second is a bit further north in the 60-foot single-family. Phase 2 was 18 lots. That was the start of the 65-foot wide, single-family lots. So, if you look at Phases 1, 2, and 3 collectively, Phase 1 had 63, Phase 2 had 18, and Phase 3 has 97 lots. So, the red dash line on the image on the screen shows the area of those 97 lots. So, you'll see that it splits both the 60-foot wide lot, as well as the 65-foot lot. There is a yellow dashed line that travels throughout Phase 3 that shows the sidewalk connections for the property. And then, something that's exciting about Phase 3 of this development is that it does connect to Dogren Road. So, some of the traffic from this development will begin to be able to travel south, instead of directly out to Jonathan Carver Parkway. So, this will include connection to Dogren Road. So, again, some specific details. It's 97 single-family homes, a mix of 60- and 65-foot lots, connection to Dogren Road. It is consistent both with the PRD and the R2 zoning of the preliminary plat. So, something that's a little bit interesting about this phase is that the PRD wasn't needed for this portion. It does consistently meet the straight R2 zoning district. So, the typical lot size is the 60-foot lot is, on average, 7,218 feet, and the 65-foot lot is 7,802 feet. So, it meets square feet, sorry. So, it meets the typical size of the R2 city code that we have. The Planning Commission did review this project at the December 20 meeting, and it was recommended for approval on a 5 to 0 vote. Thinking a little bit through some landscaping details, so Phases 1 and 2 held that big outlot that has some of the mature trees that were preserved through the construction. Phase 3 is pretty typical, that each lot will have an overstory tree to be planted at the time of construction. Paul Tabone with Lenar is here, if you have specific questions for him, otherwise, I will open it up for discussion.
We may have talked about this in the past, but again, this has been on the table for a little while, so if this is redundant, I'm sorry, but when we have the road that's coming out to Dogren, have we looked at what traffic is going to be? Do we have expectations of what that's going to look like? And then also, I believe that is still paved, that far down on Dogren, correct?
Yeah.
So, a traffic study was submitted with preliminary plat, so in 2017, it was part of a council packet, but there was a full traffic study that was completed by an engineer and reviewed by the city at the time of preliminary plat. So, I can't tell you exact numbers from that, but it was part of the packet at that time.
There's a Phase 4 to this project?
Correct. So, it's the north corner, so the big 4 on the screen. I would say eyeballing it, it's probably 20 lots total.
Okay, I see.
I was just going to ask if there are more questions. Go ahead.
I have a question, but it's actually for the Phase 2. Is it appropriate to ask? Well, the...
Sure.
I'm just wondering how things are going with, and it's great having the trees preserved. Are any been at risk? Are they, you know, are they showing stress from the construction, or maybe it's too early?
Yeah, I can say I've been out on the property since construction started. Once we start working through what we call the city walkthroughs, we start to get a pretty detailed look of how the trees are doing and the landscape plan. So, we look both at the existing trees that were preserved, as well as the trees that are going to be planted. So, I will likely be able to give you an update probably this spring, as we start to get a little bit further in the construction.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 104-19, approving Oak Tree, Phase 3, final plat.
I'll make a second.
Motion by Councilmember Henry, second by Councilmember Sayer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to the deed grant for Commerce Drive. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mayor and Council. In November of 18, the council authorized the submission of a grant application to deed, which is the Department of Employment and Economic Development with this state.
Could you speak up into the microphone a little bit? Exactly.
Well played.
I'll start over. In November of 2018, the city council authorized a submission of a grant application to deed, which is the Department of Employment and Economic Development's Innovative Business Development Grant Program. The grant was for Commerce Drive, which is necessary for the, to facilitate the development of Lakeview Industries. It's at a north-south street, which is an extension of the north-south street that runs to the east of the Mills Gas Mart. In order to secure grant funding, the city must complete two additional steps. The first is to establish and allocate 50% of the project costs in a construction fund for the project. The estimated cost of the project, based on the city engineer's estimate, is just shy of $2 million, so 50%, a 50% match, would be about $997,000. The city discussed this match with our consultants, our bond counsel, city attorney, finance advisors, specifically Springstead and Steve McDonald, and designated the sanitary sewer fund. The city needs to show that roughly $1 million in the construction fund, and then, as invoices are submitted, the state would submit 50% in reimbursement. The second piece is for the city to acknowledge grant requirements for properties benefiting from the deed program. So, essentially, deed and the state are trying to protect public grant dollars, or state grant dollars, from being used for retail development. And so, their concern was, is that on the east side of the property, and frankly, the west side of the road, that both of those properties are developed with innovative business standards. So, Lakeview meets those standards, it's basically a manufacturing industrial-type setting. They are concerned, frankly, that the east side of the property, or what's known as JCP Holdings, in the future would eventually have, or could have, a retail development. If so, the city would be required to reimburse grant funds. We don't believe that issue to be pertinent, since we, since in agency reviews, that access has been protected by a large grove of, or a basswood forest of trees in a wetland complex, so we don't believe that there's going to be curb access, or what we'd call curb cuts, to enter into that property. And so, we've submitted a letter to deed, going over those specifics, acknowledging that grant requirement. So, I'm happy to answer any questions on the letter, or the resolution pertaining to the establishment and allocation of construction funds for the Commerce Drive construction project.
So, I just have a question. You talked a little bit about the definition of innovative business, and that commercial would not qualify. What, what fits into that box of innovative business, the definition?
There, I don't have the definition in front of me, but from recollection, it's very vague. Lakeview meets it, I would, it's going to be something that pertains to a specific business use. It's not going, it wouldn't be necessarily like a welding company, but if they were fabricating a certain piece for a unique project, you know, that would qualify. What they're trying to get away from is a grocery store, movie theater, gas station, and it's only on the section of funds that they're, or the only section of infrastructure that they're funding through the grant. So, there's approximately, I think, 900 feet of an extension for Commerce Drive. It's only in that section. Once you get past that, so into what would be the Wickenhauser property, if you'd go east on that, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have to meet grant requirements. But any, any...
Would or would not?
Would not. Any business use along that stretch of Commerce Drive, if it accesses off of Commerce Drive, would need to meet innovative business requirements.
Just that section of Commerce Drive, or?
The first 900 feet.
Okay.
For the, for the estimated length of the infrastructure, so essentially 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions. I thought the information in the packet was really helpful.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 102-19, establishing and allocating $997,134.22 to the Commerce Drive Construction Fund.
I'll second. Motion by Councilmember Henry, a second by Councilmember Mock. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Right, Council Communications? So, this is where we generally go through, and if you have anything to share, or any updates on any meetings.
Or you can pass.
Or if you want to wish everybody a happy January 7, you can do that, too. Or you can pass.
Or a happy bus shed down day?
Oh, yeah.
I did see that right out from my kitchen window.
Yes.
So, exciting to see that project move forward.
Absolutely. Councilmember Mock?
Sure. I just wanted to remind that we have the Soggy Bottom Golf Tournament at Riverside Park on Saturday, January 26. It's from 11 to 2. It is a Lions fundraiser. The destination for this fundraiser is to local families in medical crisis. So, we have two families here in town, Les Peterson, and then the Kim Wynant family, who will be receiving funds. You can go online. Facebook is an easy place to find. The links are on Eventbrite for Soggy Bottom Golf Tournament. We accept donations and/or the sale of registration for the tickets. So, if nothing else, come down that day, have a beverage, have a hot dog, donate, check it out, but Riverside Park, Saturday, January 26. Thanks.
I don't have too much.
Okay.
I hope Monroe and Webb are enjoying the popcorn.
Sure they are.
Brent, I would like to have you inform everybody what our next step is to fill the council seat.
So, the interviews are scheduled for Tuesday, January...
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. We have nine applicants. We sent out the Times to the candidates, and by, on Friday, we'll be publishing, or publishing the packet for that meeting date. At that same meeting, after you go through the applications, the council can consider action to appoint one of the nine applicants. And then, they'll be subsequently sworn in, or taken the oath of office on, at your next meeting, which is January 22, also a Tuesday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any updates? Staff? Brent? Vicki? Aaron? Larry? Dan? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Motion by Councilmember Henry, I second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. See?